And again, we're so grateful that we could engage with all of the candidates for city council and really appreciate all of you taking us up on the opportunity to join tonight. So just like we did with the mayor, candidates for mayor, we are going to ask each of you to give us an introduction to yourselves by including what your definition for environmentally sustainable means to Provo specifically. And we'll give you each 90 seconds to do that. And I have a very, what did I use? I used like a Google generator to figure out the order that we're gonna go in with this. But each of you will get to answer every question that we have. And then we will rotate the order in which. We're gonna start with introductions with Adam. After Adam will be Catrice, then Jeff, then Hannah, then Sam, then Rachel. I will guide you, but that's how the order's gonna go. Okay, Adam.
Steve's gonna help us out.
That's one, two. Okay, there we go. Thank you. All right, thank you all for being here. My name's Adam Shin. I'm very excited to get to talk with you all today. It's always fun and a little nerve wracking to get to speak publicly, but it's, it is really a great way for us as candidates to get to know you and for you to get to know us and talk about the issues that matter here in Provo. I've lived in Provo for years. I first, I grew up in Utah. I first came here as a student myself. I've lived here as a working professional, now a husband and father. And one of the things that drew my wife and I to stay in Provo and to be here was our access to nature. It was the mountains and the river. We live right off the River Trail, which is amazing. We love hiking and walking around in those areas. And so conservation of our natural environment is something that's very important to me and a big reason that I wanted to live here in Provo, not elsewhere in the valley. We have a very unique situation that we live in a place that's urban, but has, it interfaces directly with nature. And it's incredible that we have access to the trails and places we do. When we talk about sustainability, to me, that means making responsible use of our resources and it means planning ahead for the future. And in my mind, that is, that goes beyond just environmental sustainability. It means things like financial sustainability, fiscal sustainability. Are we making the best use of our man-made resources? I believe strongly that we need to have conversations about that. And I'm excited to get to dive into some of these issues and these questions with you tonight.
I agree with everything the last three candidates said about sustainability. Long-term, right, for our children, for generations to come. And Adam brought up a point that I was gonna bring up as far as it means financial too. It means quality of life. It means the environment. And so it's all the pieces together. You can't just, you have to think of the full balance, always with sustainability and everything, right? And housing, in the environment. And so, on to me. I guess I am the incumbent, so I've been on the council now for four years. There's a good, big learning curve, is what I discovered. And I spent about three years working full-time to learn what I've learned and to get to know about all the aspects of the council, right? You have to learn about, I went to sustainability, the sustainability meetings. I went to the energy board meetings. I went to MAG meetings. I went to UTA meetings. You have so much to learn to all the different aspects that involve your decision-making as a counselor. So I love that process and I'm excited to use the knowledge that I gained and the relationships I made in the next four years. I love Conserv Utah Valley. My best friend and I actually started the first protest against Breville Falls. And luckily Conserv Utah Valley got involved right after that with what was going on there. But that was a huge deal. We grew up going to Breville Falls all the time. And I'm thankful that that got saved.
Thank you, Jeff.
Well, thanks everyone for coming out tonight. You all are the real fans of city government with the BYU football game going on. I have it on tape delay and my dad texted me the score and I was really upset with him. So don't look at your texts. So I grew up as the oldest of seven children and my dad was a school teacher. He retired and became a truck driver. And my mom raised us. And what that resulted in was our vacations were camping a lot. And I remember one time my mom and dad came to us and they said, "Hey, we had this really amazing trip planned. We're gonna go on a 21-day vacation." And I thought, "That is incredible. I'm so excited. What are we gonna do? We're gonna go camping for 21 days." And I said, "Oh, my goodness." But I remember, you know, camping is just sitting under the stars and seeing the Milky Way and just feeling the sense of awe that comes from being on this beautiful planet. And that's where a lot of my personal values around conservation came. I try to live it in my personal life. It is like Adam and I'm sure probably everyone here, why, one of the many reasons why we choose to live in Provo. We are one of the most blessed cities to have a beautiful canyon, actually multiple beautiful canyons, a river connecting them to a lake and these great foothills and mountains. And I think it is just such a great blessing we have. And I think the previous generations have done so much to preserve and conserve what we have. And I think it's incumbent on every generation to pay it forward to the next. And so that's my definition is, you know, treating today as if you're borrowing the future from your kids.
Hannah.
My name is Hannah Peterson and I am very grateful to be here. And I'm grateful for this forum. I've been waiting for it for a long time and I'll explain why. I'm a long-term resident here in Provo. I, I love this beautiful place. I love the outdoors. I spend, I'm outside in the canyons probably multiple times during the week with my children. When I, when, I went to BYU and when I, because I loved the outdoor so much, when I went to school, I knew I wanted a career being outside. And so I focused my efforts on urban horticulture. And I ran the plant and floral department there for a long time. When I graduated, I started my first business here in Provo. It was called Waterwise Landscaping. And I did not have very many clients. This was back in the 2000s. But I later, I moved to Colorado for 10 years. And during that time, I worked as a landscape architect. And the USGBC, which is the US Green Build Council, started a program called Lead Certification. And really what their goal was, is we want to find the professionals who understand sustainability and understand those types of things. And we want to train them and we want to single them out as the experts in the field. And then we want them to go ahead and implement these practices in the community. I am a lead certified AP. I've spent my entire career doing this. I hope I'll have more time to answer questions. But this is my wheelhouse. Sustainability means that we are making things better and not worse.
Thank you. Okay, now we go to Sam.
Hey, everybody. My name is Sam Blackburn. I'm currently a student at BYU, just up the road, studying economics. So actually, like Hannah, I've spent a little bit of time in Colorado. And it's a place that has a reputation for being really outdoorsy. But my family was in Denver and in practice, that meant that we were pretty far from the mountains. So it's been great to be out here, you know, close enough that you can get a half-day skiing in or hike in even after classes or work. To me, environmental conservation, sustainability mean a well-implemented, or well-implemented resource management, but not a general resistance to change. Utah County and Provo are really young places. And I think that local government here has a responsibility, both towards preserving resources for those future generations, but also making these places accessible to the young. Like this is a town that I'd really like to be able to, you know, buy a house in, start a business in. And if we restrict away some of those freedoms, it's gonna hit young people the hardest. And at the end of the day, I think this requires that government really think critically about what is worth preserving, you know, like our rivers and canyons and open spaces and what maybe isn't, like rundown student housing or empty lots here in Provo. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for those introductions. Can I go too?
Sorry. I just was awkward.
And maybe I don't even need to introduce myself. We're good here.
All right. So I'm Rachel Whipple. I'm an incumbent in District Five, the downtown part of Provo. We chose to take the job to move to Provo because we knew that living downtown here, we would be able to walk and bike to whatever we need to do as a family. We're a family that's only ever had one car. And that's worked even when we had multiple teenage kids. For my background, I have a bachelor's in geology, a master's in comparative studies, that's environmental humanities. And then I went to law school where I studied environmental law and water law. And I've worked with various nonprofits on environmental issues. And this came from my sense of wanting to live sustainably myself because this is part of my core values. For me, a sustainable environment, I try not to be too academic. I'll be more practical on this. But it's one that can function. We live in multiple overlapping environments. Our built environment, these cultured environments like our gardens and orchards and parks, and these more natural environments like our parks or our foothills and rivers and lakes. And these only function as long as we can flourish and as long as the other components within those environments can flourish.
Now I will say thank you so much, everyone, for your introductions and for your definitions. We're gonna go through the topics, actually the same topics that we talked with the mayoral candidates about. And we'll start with the vision for environmental sustainability and balanced growth. Again, for Provo residents, becoming a more environmentally sustainable city is a top priority. And the city's conservation plan requires balancing competing goals. So I'd love to hear from all of you, this is a two-part question. So if I need to repeat it, please ask me as we go through because again, we have a lot of you to get through. What specific policies will you prioritize to balance our city's growth with preserving its natural assets? And I'd love to hear a tangible example of a difficult decision that you would need to make in that prioritization. So I'll repeat it one more time. Specific policies that you will prioritize to balance our city's growth with preserving its natural assets? And I'd like a tangible example of a difficult decision where you would have to prioritize long-term ecological health over short-term development pressures. To start with this, we'll start with Catrice.
All right, this is a constant problem. We hear a ton about more houses, more houses, more houses, more houses will make it cheaper. And then there's the whole group that would be happy if no one moved here ever again. And it was just stacked, you know, we didn't have any more growth. One of the things we've been doing lately, to achieve affordable housing, we have to go smaller, right? We need smaller square footage. We need a smaller footprint to make it more feasible for people to get into homeownership. And one thing that we've done with, we've done two developments or approved two developments where we made them more clustered, right? So that you leave large open space. One was over on the west side where there was some marshlands and they were environmentally, now we could have gone after them and, you know, mitigated it and built on them. But we chose not to do that. We wanted to keep them open. We want to keep them accessible. So they will have boardwalks on them. We'll be protecting that space. So allowing the clustering and being thoughtful about how that development is made makes a huge difference. Also doing, we make sure that we utilize spaces. A lot of them are by trails, right? If there's existing trails, we did one over in the northeast. And it was maybe close to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. So we made sure the developer be required to do a trail up to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail and make that accessible. And so we want to use the wonderful trails and things that we have and maximize them in all of our new developments.
Thank you. Adam, you are next.
Okay. Yeah, this is such a, this is such a crucial question and is a crucial policy question for the city. How we respond to the pressures of growth and change in the city. I had the chance to serve on the Planning Commission here in Provo last year and I've seen many of these difficult decisions come through and go to the city council. One of the biggest challenges that people feel in their neighborhoods with new growth is the effects of traffic and the effects of commuting in cars, right? It's a constant topic is how, you know, one of the biggest opposition sometimes to new growth is, what about the traffic? What about the impact on our neighborhoods, right? And I think the thing that's so key to understand is that, as Catrice mentioned, some people would love to say, "Let's just not have any new growth at all." But that does not exempt us from traffic growth because people will live farther outside our city and commute in, right? And those cars will keep coming back to our community because we attract people. And so I think we need to really lean into these, as has been discussed before, other ways of transportation that don't have to come with those costs to air pollution, things like that. On the topic of a tough decision, I think that, as Catrice mentioned, some of those more clustered developments on smaller lots, I'm glad we have those. I think those are a good development. I would have loved to see those happen more in the core of the city, though, where they're more accessible and have more access to things like, you know, real walkability, real bikeability, close to jobs, close to, you know, to the university for students. I think we could, we could shift that a bit better.
And Hannah, you are next.
Oh, I am. Good. Yeah, we're talking. I think, I think there's a fact that all of your candidates are going to talk about how much we love our natural resources and how much we want to prove, how much we want to save things. But when it comes down to it, when this, when this campaign does settles, who is really going to fight for our natural places? And I think that you need to look at our record and I hope that you vet us. I hope you vet us for not just our sakes, but you vet us for everybody's. I want to talk about Buckley Draw. And this is, this will set my example. In 2016, I was on the neighborhood board and we, we wrote a neighborhood plan for that area. It's on our hillside. We had 305 people vote to preserve that as a hillside, to preserve the vegetation. We knew that there was going to be some development there. But we, and we knew that we would, the profit for that development would go to build a park. But we, we worked together and we said, "You know what? We want to preserve that hillside." It was March in 2024. There was a protective zone there in that area. The critical hillside overlay, the first time that we put it there, the Planning Commission voted to remove it. It was voted by the Planning Commission to take that away. That's something that I would stand up for. I stood up and fought hard. I went to meeting after meeting and challenged the Planning Commission and said, "Please do not do this. This is not what the residents wanted. This is not our zone." So when you come down to it, look at your, look at your candidates. When we had development, who stood up for it? I did. My wonderful opponent on the Planning Commission did vote to remove that overlay. And I think it's important for people to understand that. It's okay to say that. You need to vet us.
And Jeff, you're next.
I'll answer the question and we can come back to Buckley Draw. So I think specific, to answer questions, specific policies. I really would love to see the city do a river overlay zone. If you go to places like Chicago, they've had something like this in place that ensures public access, setbacks, potentially incentives to develop, orient development facing the river and embracing it. I'd also love to see conservation easements. I was really happy to see here both the mayor and Marcia talk about the importance of conservation easements. I'd specifically love to see one in Slate Canyon as a way to preserve the city's lands there, land there, so it couldn't be sold. And I also think the city's done a great job with our conservation, our resiliency plan. And I'd love to see us continue to try and make sure we're getting our energy sources from sustainable renewable sources. Solar, it's amazing what's happening with the cost of solar. It keeps coming down dramatically. And so that's gonna be a continually viable option. Some examples to your question of where pitting economic development versus sustainability. There's, there's really hard trade-offs in this. One would be transportation. Transport, as we talked about, clean air is such a critical part of our quality of life. It's in the very, it's one of the top concerns in our conservation and resiliency plan as a city. And as we provide alternative transportation options that are viable, it can help conserve our air and also protect land.
Thank you. Rachel.
Yeah, I've got my own. So it's, it's an interesting thing. We've, we know that we're having growth and that growth is more demand for housing, more demand for water and things like that. So what we've done is we are looking at doing more high-density housing along the transportation corridor. If we've got higher-density housing, apartments, condos, things like that, those use far less water than detached, single-family homes with their own lawns. So we're addressing both of those needs in areas where people will be able to do more of their trips by bus or bike or things like that. We're also looking at doing cottage court types of developments and neighborhood infill. We've got one just a few blocks south of here where the Ralph Town was, where we're able to preserve the asset that is a neighborhood with old historic, single-family homes, but still get infill development so that we're able to balance both the need and the preservation of a neighborhood character. Another thing that we've done that was surprisingly difficult was our water-wise programs. So we had a lot of pressure from the Central Utah Water Conservancy District to adopt a certain set of standards so that we could participate in their Flip the Strip program. Instead of adopting their standards, we looked at what the particular needs in Provo were. And the top one was to preserve our urban forest and keep those goods. So we did more smart controllers, high-efficiency water sprinklers and other things so that we have a customized program for our city needs.
Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, unfortunately, Rachel sort of stole my thunder here. I will talk about housing and zoning to no end. What I would add here is that, like, every unit of apartments or townhomes or infill development that happens here in Provo and especially in our district, in District Five and downtown, is development that doesn't have to happen down in West Provo or Vineyard or Spanish Fork, for that matter. And at the end of the day, that means that it's a solid way of preserving the existing open spaces that we do have here in Utah. Just power through?
Power through.
Okay, I'll do my best there. And yeah, it's sort of in line with that. I think there are also really important ways that you can disincentivize development around the edges of town. Obviously, you can just zone away development, you know, whether it's down by the lake or up on the hillside. But I also think there are sort of intelligent ways to make that more expensive and to provide solid incentives there. Actually, part of that, I think, could be in the form of those tiered water rates that we've seen implemented recently where that will make building, you know, big, expensive, single-family homes on the edge of town more costly. And I think that's exactly the kind of policy that we should be pursuing here.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next topic and this is about our Utah Lake water quality. Improving Utah Lake's water quality is a critical issue for all residents. And from a legislative perspective, we'd like to know what specific strategies from the Utah Lake Management Plan you would champion on the council to address nutrient pollution and improve the lake's overall ecological health? On this one, we'll start with Jeff.
Oh, boy. Okay, so basically what policies would we encourage to improve our lake?
Yeah, and if it can come specifically from the Utah Lake Management Plan, bonus points.
Bonus points, okay. Okay, amazing. So I think, I think the city has, again, it was spoken in the previous debate. It's really great to see some of the things we've done to get back into compliance with EPA standards around our water treatment facilities. I'm very grateful for those contributions. I think the, as talking about the river overlay zone as a potential thing that I think the city council can do, it's something that I think, as we're able to have potentially further setbacks from the river in any kind of, as redevelopment happens along the river, there's a lot of older development. I think if the city has that tool in place, we can be very cognizant about proper setbacks that kind of reduce pollution that could potentially find its way into the river. I think that's a very big opportunity and I will concede the rest of my time.
Fantastic. Hannah, you're next.
Well, I agree with Jeff. I like the idea of the river overlay zone, buffer zones. There needs to be with the lake and the river. And that's pretty, that's a fairly common practice around bodies of water with sustainability is that you need to have significant space before you hit the water because everything is going to leach down into the ground. So that is one thing that I would, I would support. I think it's also important to recognize that the flow of water impacts the water quality. If the river is low, if we're using too much of our water, if we grow so much that we're using a lot of our water and the flow diminishes, maybe in a drought year, you are going to see more contaminants in the, in the water system. So that's something I wonder if we could legislate, making sure that we, that our water consumption in future years, that we don't damage the lake or the river. And the other thing too, I do think we need to be careful about development, especially close to those areas and throughout all of Provo because it's about soil, it's about soil permeability. You have to make sure that if we put too many roads or sidewalks or infill or, or development, you will, you will have more contaminants go into the stormwater system and you will have more contaminants going into the river. So we need to be careful about how much we grow and that we leave green space everywhere we go. Okay, I ran out of time, sorry.
Sam, you're next.
Yeah, absolutely. I think this is a super important one. And I mean, I think there are probably sort of a couple parts to the solution here, which is, first, like Hannah was saying, I do think we need to be careful about development, especially approaching the lake and, and, you know, near the, the, excuse me, near the river, just throughout town. But likewise, I also think it's important to recognize that, you know, lots of the pollution that we are adding to the lake is actually just sort of runoff from, from streets and other kinds of infrastructure in town. And so I think this is the kind of solution that requires sort of real investment in finding the areas that contribute the most to that, to that ecological damage and being able to make the proper investments to keep them clean.
Thank you, Rachel.
All right. So our Utah Lake quality is getting better. And I think the first thing to do is to talk about the fact that it has gotten significantly better. It is a shallow lake with lots of suspended sediment and paddle boarding on it. Like if you're there on a sunny day and you look down into it, you can see the sediment in it like pearly filters. It's just beautiful. And learning to appreciate the beauty of the lake as it is and not being frustrated that it's not one of these deep mountain lakes that's clear and cold is the first step. So with the plan, it's got one component that's on ecological health and restoration for the plants that are there and the animals supported. And the other one's about recreation. Because if we can get people out onto the lake to recognize the beauty and the value of it, then we are changing attitudes. We are building a relationship and a connection to the lake. I have a neighbor who wants to start like a rowing club again. There used to be one on Utah Lake like 100 years ago. But if we could do these things so that we are once again making this the focal point of our recreation, it would be great. When the Delta Restoration Project was going, I was part of the group of volunteers that went and planted and pulled out phragmities. We need to do more to address invasive species like phragmities and Russian olive, working with like Jake Holdaway and his Wacar Way project. These are actual things that we can engage in and do to make it better.
And now we're down to Adam.
Nobody said building an island on the lake yet? I'm just kidding, just kidding. That one's, that one's off the table, so, and for good reason. Yeah, the, I've spent some time actually doing a deep dive and reading about the history of Utah Lake. It really is kind of sad to look at the history and see how much has been frankly squandered in the potential of this as a natural resource. It used to be a Native American fishing hotspot. When the early, you know, the Mormon pioneers came out, they built resorts on Utah Lake. And it's kind of hard to imagine us doing that now with the way we think about Utah Lake. And as Rachel said, I think there's a lot that we're doing that is so good. There's a lot that we're gonna be changing people's minds and then trying to get more awareness of how this is a place that is actually an amenity and not just a nuisance or something that we should kind of turn our backs on. There's been a lot said about, I mean, you know, there's obviously just, we keep increasing our standards for environmental, you know, the runoff and the quality of the water we put in the lake. I think there's a lot to be said for, with a river overlay, you can actually do a lot to help filter some of those, the pollutants that might go in the lake can be filtered by plants and roots and trees and stuff in the ground to help, help keep that water cleaner. I'd love to see us embrace that with a better river overlay zone that actually encourages recreation and green spaces we have in some areas of the lake, but not, not everywhere yet. And yeah, I think, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot we could, we can still do and a lot we can still lean into as, as the years go on.
Thank you, Catrice.
I just want to thank Luigi for coming to the debate. He is adorable and by far the youngest attendee, so thank you. Well, thankfully, Rachel and I are working on a riverside and just a river plan. We need to do a design plan. We need to do standards and a whole overlay. So we are working that and we're really excited about that. It is long overdue. And it is unfortunate that those things weren't considered so long ago when we do have car dealerships and DI and so much private residence on the river. Our water is so much cleaner. We have the third cleanest water in the whole country. That's amazing to have our drinking water be that clean. And with the water we're putting down in the lake is much, much cleaner. And that water does go all the way to the Great Salt Lake. So we give a percentage of the, our water rights to the, to the lake for that. And so that is great, too. The, one thing we need to think about is the, all the permeability, right? We, it is a big deal. And we get a much more water from the aqua for, which is even a bigger deal. So it does matter what we are putting down to the water and that we are. So it does matter what we are putting down to the water and that we are, at the same time, not scared of putting water into the aqua four because it is where we get the majority of our water. We're not getting it from reservoirs and land, land bodies of water. And we've done a lot with that, and I'll bring that up again later.
Sounds good. Thank you all. So we're going to move on to a different topic, a bit away from water, and go into talking a little bit more about land. So development in high-risk hillside areas. I think we already had this come up once. I think our current hottest area of concern right now is Buckley Draw, where we've recently had the wildfires and seen exactly what can happen with monsoon rains coming straight afterward and some moving earth with that. So when we're thinking about the hillsides and the canyon plans, which we have both, they identify significant wildfire and geological hazard. What specific regulatory changes or incentives would you propose to discourage new development in these high-risk hillside areas and enhance the city's mitigation efforts? And on this one, we are going to start with Hannah, and then we'll go to Sam.
Well, we have the Critical Hillside Overlay Zone that I know people in this room worked on. It does protect our hillside from development. It protects the vegetation and it protects collapsible soils. So this is, this is a good one because we passed it, we put it in place, and then the first time that it was tested really was with the Buckley Draw Development. To, to make more money and to get more houses into that area, that zone had to be lifted. All of those environmental and conservation plans had to be thrown out the window. And so I feel like when you're talking about legislation, we have legislation in place, but I think that we need to lock it down more. It can't go away just from a vote. It needs, it needs to stay, it needs to stay in place. And so, like I said, I think that we've, we've got it here. I feel bad because we did remove it, they did grade the entire hillside. It wasn't what the neighborhood plan recommended. And I feel bad that the, that the city employees and the mayor had to deal with that mess. But that was a decision made. So, so when you're talking about legislation, I feel like we have it in place, but we need to strengthen it so that it can't be removed at the first hint of high-density development.
Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think it is important to say here at the top that, like, I am sort of generally pro-development and like, I think that we do need avenues for our city to grow. In line with that, in a lot of ways, I don't necessarily know that outright bans in, you know, every hillside scenario is actually the best way forward. And I do tend to think that there are ways to disincentivize that kind of building and to make that kind of building more expensive, even if we do ultimately allow people to sort of exercise their own personal choice and personal liberties to build there. In line with that, like, I think it's important that insurance risks are understood and that when buyers move into these higher-risk homes, they understand the risk that they are taking on. You know, in line with that, I also think it's important to ensure that the city doesn't wind up subsidizing or paying for these developments, especially if they end up going south.
Rachel.
Yeah, when the developers came on their preliminary tour of influencers or policymakers for Splash Summit, their original proposal was just to build on this entire area. And my first question to them was, have you done a geotechnical study in this? Because there was no area for free flow or detention basins or anything, and we've got water tanks and things there. And I'm like, how is what you're proposing even physically possible? And it wasn't. It was not possible. And we've got a really good public works department that will make developers do that kind of analysis. One thing that we have talked about through the council and we're not pushing quite yet is exploring the possibility of putting that Slate Canyon area that the city already owns under a conservation easement. We want to go through the process with Bunnels Fork and Bunnels Canyon first to make sure that we could do this properly. And it is kind of an extraordinary thing that the city would consider putting some of its own property that it controls in an easement. It's essentially saying, well, we don't necessarily trust future councils to continue to take care of that. That is what we are considering.
And the next person is Adam.
All right, yeah. I wanted to jump off what Sam was saying, a little bit about the housing and growth question, and talk about the financials of growth. Because I think that when you look at, when you look at the environmental side of the question, oftentimes, in the long run, the environmental side and the financial side actually are aligned. You know, yeah, you might, you might see some short-term financial gain doing things this way or that way, but a lot of the time, the places that it makes the most sense, you know, environmentally, to build and to direct our, our, our growth and attention towards make the most sense financially, too. I'll give you an example on the, right now, Provo is largely, we, a lot of our, the easy prime land to build on has been built out, as you all know. We have some land on the, on the west side that's open, that is not in our Critical Hillside Zone, that kind of our de facto housing policy has been to direct that growth towards that area. The challenge we have there is that, and this has been said in city council meetings by our city staff, every new detached, low-density, single-family home that you build on the edge of town is a financial drag on the city. Those kinds of, that kind of development actually does cost more to the city to maintain when you look at the infrastructure than it brings in in taxes, right? And the same thing is definitely true with our Critical Hillside Zones, you know, that the cost of the infrastructure to maintain it and take care of it in those difficult areas is more expensive, right? And so, yeah, that's, there's a lot to consider there. I'd support us taking that very seriously as we, as we look ahead.
Thank you, Catrice.
One of the things that we've done in the last, I don't know, we did it last year, I think, but there are still a surprising number of lots up on the foothills, right, that are insensitive areas. And there's already housing up there that's having trouble, and ideally, we don't want them to build there. But people do own it, a lot of them, it's their retirement. Like, these are people that have owned these lots for years, and they're planning to sell them as their retirement. So we wanted to work on disincentivizing it, right? That was our goal. And so what we did is we set up a program where they can move the development rights. So they can sell those development rights, then they'll, the property will be left in a conservation easement where it cannot be developed. And those development rights can be put, be put elsewhere where they can be wisely used, where it's appropriate. So I think that was a great move to do. Another thing, I talked about what I want to do is the lake stuff, right? We have to do better with that, to get a bigger setback, to set up very specific goals and specifics on what should be done and what is appropriate. And design standards with that, too, right? Because any, still, anything that is backing up to it, though it'll be further back, we still care about the design and the look. Another thing is I really, really want to work on incentivizing better land use south of campus. From south of campus to 500, Rachel and I have talked about this a bit, but I really, really, really want to, so much, they're just making so much money on these decrepit properties that could be utilized so much better. I want to find a way to incentivize redevelopment there. A real benefit, I can't see the time. Oh, thank you.
Okay, Jeff.
I love what Catrice was just talking about. I think that's, I think that's a great idea. And I was also going to mention, when I was on the planning commission, we worked on this very sensitive land swap program that was to disincentivize building on these properties. I would maybe consider trying to expand that map and evaluate it because we kind of started with the pilot area, so I like that point. Talking about Buckley Draw a little bit, I think it's important to recognize a couple things. The main reason why the CHAZ had to be removed was just because of the home density. It met most of the other requirements of the zone besides that one. Forty percent of the land along the hillside was left open space aligned with the CHAZ Zone. And it probably never should have been put in CHAZ in the first place because it was, the hillside there was not 30%. It was single-family homes, all detached, all for sale. I don't think it's fair to say that there was more density because the land developers want to make more money. It's because we wanted to try to make the homes as close to affordable as possible. I mean, these homes are going to be $500,000 plus as they are, and we really, the city council has had a policy to try to encourage homeownership and try to get above 50% homeownership. It's really important that we provide housing in the city that young families or laborers can work, and that was a policy goal that was set by the city council that we tried to achieve with the Buckley Draw development. Unfortunately, we also knew there was a flood plain risk, so as part of the development agreement, the developer was supposed to extend the channel, the debris channel that is protecting my home. And sadly, that didn't get extended prior to groundbreaking, and that was an unfortunate thing to happen. And so that's why both Councilwoman Catrice and Councilwoman Rachel voted for the development also. It was, it was a good project if it had been executed per the development agreement.
Okay, we're going to move, we're stick with land, but move to a new topic around preserving agricultural land and open spaces. There's a strong community desire to preserve open spaces and agricultural land. As a council member, what steps will you take to identify, protect, and fund the preservation of these lands, for instance, through conservation easements or other zoning tools? And on this one, we'll start with Sam.
Yeah, sorry about that. Okay. Where was I?
Do you want me to restate the question?
That would be really great.
Because we're talking about preserving agricultural land and open spaces. As a council member, what steps would you take to identify, protect, and fund the preservation of these lands, for instance, through conservation easements or other zoning tools?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for repeating that. I mean, I think the biggest thing is that figuring out like where we need to be preserving these open spaces, like where they're important to people, requires us to actually go out and like talk to people in Provo. I mean, I think any of the currently seated members of the city council will tell you that, you know, they see a lot of the same faces, that the crowd that comes to city council meetings and to city planning commissions are not exactly representative of the town as a whole. So I think a big part of the process is making sure that, you know, people who don't necessarily have the time for hours-long weeknight meeting have a, have a say in this process. Beyond that, I do think it is absolutely important that we preserve many of these spaces. And, you know, in line with that, I do think that there are zoning tools, including continuing to upzone areas in downtown to concentrate development there and hopefully keep, especially the kind of big, single-family home development that Adam was talking about earlier, away from these open spaces.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, I would love to, to keep all of our open space in the west side, but I know that that's not entirely possible. I do want to do everything I can to encourage those private property owners who want to enter a conservation easement to do that and to partner with them through real policy and financial support so that they can do that. I know that some people need to be able to pull out some of the money from the property so that they can continue to do the farming, to do investment, to make a creative agricultural reuse of that property, because otherwise, their only option is to sell it. The other thing that I think is important is that we continue to encourage agriculture on smaller lots and, you know, have smaller lots allowable for conditional agricultural uses. We need to do more to encourage urban farming, urban gardening, so that we can have this mixed in with our residential area and still have it be viable. Another thing that we looked at that I was, was pushing for was a smarter consideration of our water rates for those users who are doing urban farming, because we want to make that viable. It's part of our community sustainability that we are able to grow our own food here. And so whatever we can do to continue to protect our farmland that's in production, to protect our orchards, we need to do that.
Thank you, Catrice.
Sorry, I need to stand. Legs are falling asleep. I second everything Rachel said. I was going to mention that we did, we passed the, you mentioned it. Yes, we mentioned, we did pass a way to do agriculture on a smaller scale, right, to kind of like agrotourism. You know, any way that we can save the farms or have people still make a living in the way they want to, we are 100% for. Now, no one's really taken us up on that yet, so I hope that that does happen. But it's interesting. I'm all for doing conservations wherever we can. And we, the city actually spent a lot of money just before I got on the council to buy Slate Canyon. And it was like, it was a million two to buy some of the land at Slate Canyon to add to the size of the land that the city owned there, which was a great purchase. But doing a conservation easement for a farm doesn't necessarily mean it's going to have any public access. So the idea of doing public tax funds for that is not always, I think, the best choice because conservation easements can be for the farmers to keep farming it, which is fantastic. I love that. But I do want that money to come from outside funds as opposed to the city paying for that. But I welcome any and all of them that want to do that. We have over 100 acres in conservation easements on the west side, and we have the Delta Project, and expanding that is, I'm all for it. It's all a benefit to all of us.
Thank you, Adam.
Yeah, land use is such a big question, and it really all comes down to zoning in the city. It comes down to those invisible regulations that determine what can be built, where and when and how, right? As we look to our limited amounts of open space in the city and think about how they should be used, it's important to recognize that the development pressure to build those out and to turn them into something else comes from this growing demand there is to live in Provo and live in Utah. Our city is a hub and we attract people. We're an economic engine. And people are always, you know, I think a lot of people who want to come and live in Provo don't necessarily want to go live on the far outskirts of town necessarily. Many of them, as we've discussed, are students. They want to live close to campus. They want to live close to downtown where there's jobs and where there's, there's transportation access and that kind of stuff. And that's what our general plan calls for as we plan for growth, is to, is to allow that. Unfortunately, right now, our zoning does not allow that. And I think unfortunately, it has not in the past been a priority for the city council to actually make those changes to align our zoning with the general plan. I think we're overdue to start looking at that. It's becoming a priority now, in part because the state is actually kind of forcing our hand on this and saying that we need to align those, that zoning with the, with the goals, with, with good urban planning practices. But there's a lot that comes down to us, too, to make sure that we're doing that in a wise way that, you know, that doesn't have those externalities like traffic and environmental concerns. So there's, there's a lot for us to be looking at with that, I think.
Thank you, Jeff.
So I grew up on an acre and a half of land in Gilbert, what was then rural Gilbert, Arizona, and my, every Saturday, we had to do four hours of work. We had pigs, chickens, goats, orange trees, and I just love agriculture. And so when we were on the planning commission, we worked a little bit on how to create opportunities for farms to keep their operations viable. There's a lot of economic pressure. It's, costs have gone up, and a lot of these kind of smaller-scale farms in the city are not viable. So agrotourism and agro-events are like a very important way. I would love us to do a study, talking to all these farmers and see what could the city offer by way of code to make those more viable as potential businesses? Or maybe we could get the farm, that Wilkinson Farms that's getting kicked out of Orem to come to Provo. That'd be fantastic. I also would love to see maybe Provo look at doing a community farm on the west side. I think an investment like that would be fantastic for young kids and future generations. Farming teaches folks a lot. I learned so much as a kid growing up on, it wasn't a farm, it was an acre and a half, but we called it our little farm. And yeah, I think, I think that there's a lot of opportunity, and now's the time to do it. One last thing I'd say is that I think it'd be fantastic for the city to have a way to, to streamline a process and a program for existing farmers who are interested in putting their land in a conservation easement for the city to facilitate it without necessarily spending the money on the land. But if, I know, for example, my mission president, he had a lot of land in Farmington that he, the city just facilitated, made it easy for him to put his old land in a conservation easement. They're going to use it until he dies, and then it will be done in that regard.
Hannah.
Well, I, I owned a company in Colorado for 10 years called City Guard, City Guarding Commercial Design. And what I especially, what we did, and we were very successful, is we designed commercial areas and made them more green, existing commercial areas. In fact, I think I probably designed most of the large buildings in Denver in that area, and we were able to get, give them the LEED certification and the sustainability. That's what we did, is we identified areas and we called them microgreens around our urban environment where we could just make it more beautiful, make it more livable, encourage. And there was all types of grants and tax benefits for these buildings and urban environments to do this, and I would love to bring that voice to the city council. Those grants and tax benefits are still here. I just don't think we're educating people enough on what's available. The second thing, too, is my, the most successful project I ever did was in an area that was similar to West Provo. The second thing, too, is my, the most successful project I ever did was in an area that was similar to West Provo. It was south of the Denver metro area and it was going to be built out. And everybody was very concerned about what it was going to look like. It had 900 homes planned for it. But what we did is we had a master plan for this area. It was connected by paths. It had green, little microgreen areas everywhere. We had tree requirements that we required the developer to put in place. I just want to make sure that we do it right. We have to do it right. And I do have the experience to.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're going to move forward to our second to the last topic, in case anybody's curious. And we have about 20 minutes left to do it in. Okay, so sustainable development standards is the next topic. Provo's general plan calls for integrating sustainability into all new developments. So the question is, how will you ensure that new projects across the city adopt low-impact development standards and green infrastructure to protect our sensitive ecosystem? And this question will start with Rachel.
Yeah, so as a city council, we actually haven't adopted stretch codes as a mandatory thing. It's something that we would encourage and it's a good idea. And we believe that businesses and developers will find that there's economic benefit from doing it. And if it's a residential context, adopting those stretch codes will help. Even if it makes the initial product slightly more expensive, the use of that project, living in it and your utilities long-term are less expensive. So we get this long-term benefit on the housing affordability. I would like to see us look at adopting stretch codes as something that's mandatory. The discussion that we had before was, you know, pushing back on this because of a concern about affordability and also a concern about additional government overreach, putting more standards on that may not be necessary. But we are finding that the smart investment in our infrastructure, because our built environment, our houses, our streets and things like that, we have those for a long time, just like we have our fleet of vehicles for the city for a long time. So the smarter the decisions that we make for the new ones that we put in, the more we get benefit from that. It's similar to like going ahead and adopting like the best seismic standards. We just need this.
Fantastic. Adam, you're actually next.
Yeah, this is a great question. I'm actually, one of my interests on the side is building science and is understanding modern building codes and building materials and how we actually are building these modern buildings. And it's so fascinating. If you look over the last, you know, I mean, 50, 60, 70, 80 years, there's been so much change in how the standards and the ways that we build, the materials we use, the minimum standards we have to hold ourselves to. And we're still kind of learning. You know, we're not building in the same way that we did for hundreds or thousands of years before that. We're using these new materials. And so there's questions about how we can use them the best way, how we are making these, you know, homes that are safe to live in, that are healthy to live in, that are going to last, they're going to have a low environmental impact. Going back to one of the things I said earlier, I really do believe this. Oftentimes, what makes the most sense financially in the long term is the same thing that makes the most sense in terms of our environment and those kinds of concerns. Man, I would love to see us, when you think about some of the impacts that we have, that new development has, you know, the amount of pavement that makes the ground impermeable, the amount of water that we need to spray to irrigate our lawns and that kind of stuff. Finding smart ways to embrace the fact that we live in a climate that's unique out here. And, you know, native planting, that kind of stuff, using less pavement, less impermeable surfaces. I think there's a lot we could do that other places are doing, that we could look to, to create beautiful places to live that are also environmentally congruent with our place we live.
Thank you, Catrice.
I remember one of the things that we passed, I was really excited about, was we got rid of the use of astroturf. Now, it can be used in some sports necessities that were needed or that, but not as landscaping. I mean, we get all of our water, it's like 95% of our water comes from the aquifer. It matters having those toxins go into our water and permeate into our soil. So I was glad that we took care of that. One thing I've learned about citizens in Provo is that they really, really, really care about the environment. They do, they will do it on their own. I remember those knocking doors four years ago. It was when the education campaign was going on on being water-wise, okay? And what was interesting is that every part of the neighborhoods, the whole city talked about it. It didn't matter if it was the east side or the west side or the south or the north. Everyone mentioned it was aware of it and they cared about it. And it didn't matter if it was a big house or a little house, it just didn't matter. Everybody universally cared about it. And I loved seeing that. And what was so interesting now to see is that over the last four years, we have actually, citizens have used a million less in water every year. That is huge. Even with our city growing, we are using less and less water because citizens care. And it is important to them. And I love that they didn't need a mandate to do that, they did it on their own. And Rachel mentioned that we did a water-wise program for Provo specifically, which has also been successful, is another way that we can educate people.
Jeff, here next.
Thank you. I think the low-hanging fruit here is the city's own buildings and the city's own operations. Shout out to the city and the mayor for our new town hall being zero emission. I also think, I agree with a lot of what Rachel mentioned as some opportunities to do. Another thing that I learned that was interesting on the planning commission when we were looking at our water reports was that essentially Provo uses double amount of water in the summer versus the winter, perhaps even more. And that essentially comes down to one factor, which is grass. And of course, we all love grass. I love playing frisbee and lawn games. But I think opportunities to incentivize more sustainable local plant landscaping will go a long way for our water conservation. And one thing that like, maybe this is because of my, you know, camping under the stars and just my love of the sky is like one thing that I think we don't talk about enough is light pollution. And one of my, like, I'd say my wish list for city policy would be something like perhaps a dark sky ordinance. Obviously, it would have to be done in a way that incentivizes and doesn't hurt businesses and everything. But I would just love to be able to see the stars a bit more again as we look up at the sky. And in fact, that's one of the things I think I love about Provo. You can still see a little bit of the stars, but if you go to like where I grew up, it's very hard to see the stars. So those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Hannah.
Well, your question was, is, I think it's been a while, is what am I going to do to help encourage sustainable building standards? That is my profession. That's what I do. My job as a lead AP is to take a client who is building a building or renovating a building and take them step by step and show them all of the things that they can do to make it sustainable. And if they meet that threshold, I sign off of, I sign off of it and then they get a bunch of tax credits. So I would love to bring that experience. What I've noticed is, I always talk about selling sustainability. I was successful because I was able to sell sustainability. And that means that you talk, you, how you package things, how you promote sustainability, all these different things that you can do, you always talk about the money, too. You talk about the tax savings they can get. You talk about, you just sell it so that it's a packaged deal and it's affordable to them. And there's a lot of things that we can do. We did, we talk about how we don't have mandated policies. A lot of cities do have, they will just have higher impact fees when people are being very reckless with their building. And I know that's a, that's a hard thing to say. But in my experience, when there was a little bit of incentive to go that direction, most people did and they found that if you had good policies in place, you really could save some money. And it seemed like by the time we were done, everybody was using, every single building that we met with, they all wanted to be sustainable because it made sense monetarily.
Thank you. Sam?
Yeah, for sure. I think a lot of what has been said here is thoughtful and good. But I think maybe an element that's missing a little bit is just that, you know, we can keep adding restrictions and then we can, you know, put holes in those restrictions for, you know, exceptions and whatnot. But at the end of the day, and especially in kind of the more urban core downtown part of Provo that I'm campaigning to represent, the best thing is often just to build more densely. And I think that, you know, we can continue to build the same sort of inefficient buildings that we've always built, just in a more environmentally friendly way. Or we can choose to change the way that we design our cityscape a little bit and, you know, pack more people in, especially in sort of student neighborhoods where people are already unhappy with their housing. Like, I think there's definitely an opportunity to incentivize denser, more solid construction in ways that doesn't environmentally impact kind of the outskirts of town.
Thank you. All right, we're on to our last question and then we will do a round of closing statements. But the last question relates to community and committee engagement. The Citizens Sustainability and Natural Resources Committee is a key partner in shaping policy. And we have a lot of Provo residents who are actively engaged in the process of governing. I would love to know, in your role as a city, as a member of the city council, what strategies you have for actively engaging with the sustainability committee and also leveraging the passion of our residents to get input and shape Provo's environmental policies? And this question will start with Adam.
So serving on the planning commission, I got a little glimpse of how this engagement works. I think the mayor mentioned 90, over 90 people who serve on these boards and committees, which is great. It's great that we have so much input from all these different, you know, just the group of people you're going to get together to be part of all these commissions and different interests, whether it's architecture or city planning or, you know, the, you know, our water board, our airport board. I'd love to see a little bit more communication and a little bit more engagement between those groups and the city council and the public. I was surprised that, for example, the planning commission doesn't actually meet with the city council on a regular basis to actually discuss kind of how the, you know, discuss the decisions and discuss priorities. I think there's some cases where it could have helped to actually have some of those discussions out in the open and make more communication happen between those groups. I would love to see us, as a city council member, I would love to see us hearing from and talking with these groups more often. And just having conversations, I think, is valuable. There is, running a city is by no means a one-person job or one, even the city council, you know, is a very, very small group. And as leaders, as council, we definitely need to hear from the citizens and from the people who we have working for the city. I'd love to encourage more meetings and more opportunities to engage.
Catrice.
When I ran four years ago, I, one of the big things I noticed talking to citizens was that so many people were not informed on things. And a lot of people that were upset about something, it was usually from being misinformed. So being educated on it was suddenly just like, oh, this is wonderful. I love all the engagement the city does. So Adam said, we have 90-plus people on committees. And we also do things like probology. We do things like the Citizens Police Academy. We do things with the fire, too, so that you can get to know all the different parts of the city. That's amazing. If you guys haven't done those programs, I highly recommend them. But an educated citizenry is good for everyone. And so one of the things I started that I do is I send out a newsletter every two weeks. I send it out before every council meeting. And I love the feedback I get from that. It's so, so helpful to me because our job is to represent the citizens. It's not what Catrice wants, it's what the citizens want. And I have to be educated, meaning I need to understand what they want. I need to understand what's going on and understand that subject. All of us, except for the planning commission, a counselor is assigned to a board and sometimes multiple counselors, but all the other boards and commissions do have a counselor assigned to them. The planning commission has a division that we're supposed to keep legally that we can't discuss things with each other. So that's a little different. But we all, all, all benefit from increased engagement and more engagement.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, when I served on the planning commission meeting, I remember we had a joint meeting with the city council and I learned a lot. And I don't know if the city council did, probably not. But as Councilwoman McKay said, these are learning, there's a learning curve by both with the city council and with the different boards and commissions. And so part of my strategy would be to have frequent meetings and meetings that can be collaborative in nature. I also think that like, one of the things that you, I learned after a while beyond the planning commission is sometimes the reports, the port outs don't always fully capture the insight that comes from the meeting. And so I think that one, there's really great tools out there now that will provide recordings and transcripts of entire meetings that you can use AI to just quickly ask questions about and interrogate to really get a feel for what happened in these meetings. I would love to look at tools like that so that the city council could potentially just ask a lot of questions of what happened and not just rely on one perspective of how the minutes were typed out from the meeting. I think that'd be an interesting thing to look at. Another thing as far as how to incorporate citizens, so in my career, I build software for many thousands of users. And we, building a great product is all about listening to what your users want. And so I've, through my career, been able to adopt a lot of different strategies to be able to understand what users want from building large communities that people can just talk in and watching what users talk about in the communities, to surveys, to focus groups, to deep research. And I'd love to bring those techniques if I am lucky enough to serve on the council.
Thank you, Hannah.
Well, the committee, the Sustainability and Natural Resources Committee has a council liaison. I would hope I would be able to be one of the liaison if elected. I love that committee. I've watched it carefully. I wonder if it would not be helpful to maybe have a separate natural resources committee or to amplify it a little bit. If, you know, sustainability, that's a lot. You're talking about rebates and transportation and different things like that, air quality. But I believe that our natural resources, our canyon and our lake, we need more eyes on those areas and I think we need more people. You know that there are Rock Canyon people that are in that canyon every day, you know, and they know every little nook and cranny of that canyon. There are Provo Canyon people, there are Lake people. I've been a Slate Canyon person for years and years and years where I know every little thing. And so we get nervous when we see graffiti, you know, at the top of Squaw Peak. I get nervous when I'm driving up to Vivian Park and I see illegal fireplaces. Those eyes on the ground. I would love to have, expand that committee where we have citizens who are just so passionate about Slate Canyon or those different areas, they serve on the committee, they rotate through, we give them goals and they give us reports on every little thing that needs to be, that needs to take place to preserve those areas. Because those are the people who are going to be there the most. We do not have the resources to send our police or our parks department on huge hikes all the time. So we need those people in those areas that are passionate about it to watch it and give us the goals of what we need to do to preserve it.
Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a case where, you know, this is one that I do want to approach with some humility. You know, I'm a student, I live sort of in the downtown part of Provo. And the Sustainability Committee has some real sort of expertise specialization here. And so, you know, I do just want to say that like, these are voices that I respect and, you know, would really like to listen to and to learn from. Beyond that, I mean, I think there are other valuable opportunities for interacting with people in Provo. And to some extent, I think that actually means like going and talking to people. You know, whether that's like setting up a table at BYU or even like the grocery store. Like, I think there are ways to get public input from ways that the city council maybe, people that the city council maybe isn't always hearing from.
Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, so I actually served on the Citizens Sustainability Committee in the 20-teens for several years. And when I became a counselor, I started going back to all of those meetings. You are welcome to join them, they start at 7:15 in the morning. So yeah, those are super, super long days. And so I continue to go to those meetings. I find them really useful because these are people who are engaged in the committee and in the community and they have this shared vision. And we have a representative from BYU Sustainability, we have Provo Power there. And I'm there as a counselor so that these people who are engaged and passionate and influential can have really good information that they can continue to spread. And we in Power and City Council are getting information from them that helps inform the decision-making. I also sit on the Mayor Sustainability Committee, that's another one that I do. And I'm not on the Ag Commission, but my husband is. And so I get the inside scoop from that because that's another area that we really need to look at as we're protecting our land and space. I love that we've got so many groups who are interested in doing this. You know, there's the Rock Canyon Preservation Alliance, we've got friends at Slate Canyon, Christina Davis has done a lot of work with that and working with Conserv Utah Valley for it. And even the Provo Water Board. By the way, we've got open seats, so apply to be on that board.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that is it for our formal questions. Thank you so much for your attention to the time, which was really helpful, and also your preparation tonight. I want to give you just a few minutes for a closing statement, and let's just start with Sam and go down the line.
Yeah, I wanted to lead off by saying thank you all for coming out tonight. Really generous of you to take the time on a Saturday evening, and a big thank you to Conserve Utah Valley as well for putting this event on. You know, I am a student and at risk of beating the housing issue to death here, I think there maybe is an element of that that went a little bit sort of untouched on here. And that's that, you know, because of current restrictions in the housing supply, especially in kind of student neighborhoods south and west of campus, there are a lot of students that have effectively been pushed out into other parts of town. And at the end of the day, like building more in downtown Provo will allow those students to move in and actually free up many of the spots that they're currently occupying. And then, you know, those spots allow for, for growth and for more kind of non-student people to have an opportunity to move into Provo without necessarily sort of expanding and building more, especially on the outsides of town where development does, excuse me, does pose a much greater risk to the, the environment and to sustainability goals. So, thank you guys, and pass it along here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I, thank you for coming, for hosting us and all of you for coming and listening. I, I really care about these issues. I was on the committee that helped shape the Conservation and Resiliency Plan. I went to a conference on environment and literature and came back with the proposal for B-City and worked with Henna Salson, who's our part-time sustainability person in the city, to see if our city would meet those qualifications so that we can encourage invertebrate pollinators to help our environment flourish. And we do. Our Parks and Rec is actually really good with these environmentally sustainable practices, and we just didn't know it. I want our city to not only be good at these things, but to be exemplary so that our citizens know that this is something that we value as a city so that they can follow that example, so that we're all working together so that we can thrive. I'm really fortunate to be married to a botanist who's been converting our entire front yard into a native plant garden. I think by the time it's done, the only thing that's not native will be the Chinese fringe tree, but it's probably the only tree like that in Provo, so we'll keep it. But these are things that are part of my core value in life, and I try to use that to help the city.
Thank you.
Several people on the stage today mentioned that we all chose to live in Provo because we love our natural environment. I think that's very true. I also think another reason is because we love the people here, and it's just, it's amazing to see so many people here on a Saturday night during a BYU game caring so much about our community, it just is incredible. I'll still be really mad at you if you tell me to score. So, oh, weathered, like, great, amazing, even better. So, what, I lived, I served, I served an LDS mission in West Africa, and I also had the opportunity to live in Mexico for a little while with my family. And one of the things you learn, if you have the opportunity to live in other countries that potentially are not as high up on the income scale, is that there is a relationship between financial sustainability and environmental sustainability, and it's quite strong. As you are financially sustainable, it allows you to pay for things that allow you to think about the future. If you're only thinking about today and making it today, it's harder to think about the future. And so one of the things that I hope I can contribute on the council, given my background on entrepreneurship, strategy consulting, and, and business, is to help us make sure we have a strong financial footing now and in the future so we can continue to fund these very, very important issues around sustainability, open space protection, potentially upzoning and scale zoning for things like conservation. And these, these things are very important to me, and I'm excited that we have such a great foundation and so many people care and hope that we continue to build on it.
Thank you. Well, I'm, I've lived here for such a long time, and my family has been in the outdoors for a long time. I know Provo is changing. I mean, I'm old enough to remember when Slate Canyon, none of that was built out. We used to go play up there after school, and there was an old cement truck that was, you know, the drum of a cement truck, and it was rusted out, and we would dare each other to climb in. I have a very strong memory of being stuck in that drum of that cement truck for a long period of time. But I remember in high, you know, in high school, my friends and I, we would go up to South Fork, and no one was there. It was just a dirt road. You remember, it was a dirt road, so that was just all high school kids, that was our stomping grounds. And those are wonderful things, and I know things change, and it's okay that they change. But one of the primary reasons why I'm running is because I know that my background needs a voice in Provo. I love Provo, I left, I have a very strong career in sustainability, and now I'm coming back. And I want to bring that perspective and that expertise back to Provo. About our natural resources, you can feel it. You know when growth is okay, but you also can feel it when those places maybe are getting a little bit overused. And that's how I feel when I, when I ride my bike up, you know, Squaw Peak, up those trails and up Provo Canyon, I can just tell that some of those areas are going to be overrun. And so I want that voice to be a strong voice. My priority is, it is, like I said, this is one of the main reasons why I'm running, is to have that voice and to make sure those beautiful places are preserved. Thank you.
One of my favorite views of Provo is looking down from the peak of Mount Tempanogus. I've had the chance to go up and hike that a number of times, and it is, it's beautiful, and it leaves you with a sense of, of respect, I think, for those who have come before and what's been built out and what was the, the legacy that we're sitting on. Some of my ancestors were the earliest people to come out here and build cities in this part of Utah, and I think many of them probably enjoyed the same views. When I think about their lives versus my life and our lives now, I think about how, how fortunate we are and how, how much convenience and wealth we have compared to those early pioneers. We are so wealthy compared to, to them. At the same time, we're more detached from some of these inputs and outputs of daily life. We rely on systems around us to supply our daily needs in ways that the pioneers were much more hands-on with. But it is just as critical that we are paying attention, that we're invested in the future of the place that we live and that we're helping to build it just as, as they were. I'm running for office because I want my kids and grandkids to be able to have a future here in Provo. I love it here, and I love the community. And to me, loving a place means being open-eyed about the challenges we face too. There's been challenges discussed here on this, on this stage, and, and we're going to keep hearing about these over the years. And it's important that as we look to the future, we're thinking about what we're doing, we're thinking about how we're solving problems, and, and, and making wise decisions as we, as we steward what we've been left behind. And if that resonates with you, I would be honored to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you to Conserve Utah Valley for putting this on. The founders of Utah, Conserve Utah Valley, I think they are just, they were just channeling what everyone cares about. The citizens of Provo do care about this. They cared about Brightville Falls, they cared about islands on the lake, which is still the most ridiculous idea, but they cared and they responded. And I love it that they organized this for us. The, it's about education, I think we need to do better about education and also mentioning our successes. I know I was in a meeting once at the city, it was when I very first came on as a counselor, and I cannot remember the particulars, it's been too long, but it was something like our pollution had gone down or there was something that we, that was measurable, and I can't remember the particulars, but I remember someone saying, and don't tell anyone, they'll stop doing it, like, don't tell the citizens. I was like, that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard, this is awesome, like, this should be on our social media, let's go, let's just rave about this. And that's what I, like, when we did the, that citizens are spending a million less a year on their water, that means they're conserving. Let's, let's, that should be way out there, and it's not. I do think we need to do better about mentioning and talking about and praising the successes, right? And then we educate on how they can improve. Citizens want to improve, they want to do better. Everybody lives here for the environment, they do. They love the nature and how close we are to it. And I'm excited the next four years to use the knowledge that I've gained to stand up for you and be a voice. Thank you.
That ends the, or concludes our evening. Thank you so much to the candidates who prepared so much to be able to come and represent their ideas tonight. We really appreciate their time and energy here. I had a chance to talk to many of them on the phone before we came tonight, and I will repeat something that I have said to them, I respect anybody who is willing to put themselves out to run for office, and also those who are willing to sit in that seat and, and serve us. So thank you so much for your energy and your effort and for coming tonight, and thank you all for coming and engaging. And for those of you who are online, who stuck with us through this whole thing, thank you very much. We, and there have been between ten and twenty all night. So yes, so just one last thing from Conserve Utah Valley, we do have our information about joining our newsletter, if you're not already on it by the door, consider a donation, it helps support us in activities like this. And we will have a summary of the event up in the next couple of days. Thank you so much. A round of applause for the candidates. And with that, we will also end the online experience. Good night.